Know that you are on YouTube now.
Hello.
There's a paper out here.
Steve, will you trade places?
Sure.
Sorry, I just want to say that we should move this issue up.
Yes.
Since we have that game here.
Yeah, I would. And then some of these other ones have to be done before these, obviously.
Before.
You can't sign these until.
The end.
These pieces are approved.
Right. No, I knew that.
And if they don't, if they're not approved, I'll have to send Tara back up to.
Great. Is she here?
Yes.
She'll be here. Very nice.
I hope you didn't find any other mistakes.
But it's miners.
We got agendas and everything up there.
She had their grand figure in for Ashley. She'd used a figure that was budgeting for this year, which is what better was scheduled to make.
You know, I know you said, I just don't even understand how it could be.
For being recorded.
All righty.
You can talk about it.
Yeah. All right.
Jesus, my Lord.
I'm waiting for the clock to say six.
From Maine, it's Mooseville. But a guy that goes back and forth.
Now it's recorded. Yes, yes, it is.
Welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here and those of you on Zoom. And because of the presence of people here to talk about the school's HVAC system, we'll move that up to our first agenda item. So you can leave if you wish. Do we have any declarations of conflicts of interest on the board for any issues? No? Okay, thank you. We have three sets of minutes to review the March 10th Select Board Meeting, the March 10th Public Hearing, and the March 12th Special Select Board Meeting. Did people get a chance to review those?
Yes.
All right. Do I hear a motion for the March 10th Select Board?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's everybody. The March 10th Public Hearing Minutes. Any issues with those?
Will we approve second?
All in favor? That's everybody. And finally, the March 12th Special Select Board Meeting. Any comments or issues with those?
I thought they were very well done.
Yes, thank you. Two sentences, shortest meeting ever, three minutes. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Sure.
All in favor? That's everybody. Okay, thank you. Have any Select Board members or the town manager had any communications from the public to report? Recently? Well, let us know if you think of something. Did people have a chance to review the warrant that Irene sent us this afternoon?
Yeah, I thought it was very straightforward. I didn't have any, anything of note, particularly out of line.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I don't know why there was $300 spent on coffee. They, they ordered. Bill had ordered one batch. And then the day Bill was out, Tara ordered two more.
So you'll be set for a while.
We go through a lot with the. You know, it's, it's not going to last a whole long time. I mean, it could well, but not that long.
All right then, if people don't have any other questions, Irene, you can go ahead and send that around for us to sign.
It's going down.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from members of the public before we move to our regular agenda? No? All right then. So the first item we'll consider is the school's request that the town put this warrant article on the ballot about the town borrowing money for the school's HVAC system. So Mike, you want to tell us why this is needed and why we should put this on the ballot?
Sure. But we've been working on this, I think, since last spring. When our, we got a quote to fix part of the HVAC system, that quote is more $250,000. At that point, we decided we need to look at other options because our whole system is 30 to 40 years old and parts of it are failing or no longer working. So we went out and RFP process, selected Energy Efficiency Institute or Investments. And Carrie and Adam are here from EEI today to answer any technical questions about the project and help us find a solution for the HVAC system. And the, the real life problems, how this manifested itself is just a few weeks ago, the, the sensors broke and Josh DePaild's room, another classroom, and those classrooms were probably 85 degrees for two or three weeks. It takes some medical services that long to get there to fix it and to get the parts. In addition, we, on a regular basis, have a valve spray in which we can't control the channel and then begin the room to get to the 83 degrees. That could be fall and it could be soaring. And it takes weeks for those to get repaired. Every valve that needs to be replaced is $2,000. We've replaced, I think, every valve in every classroom in the building. And we've done several classrooms multiple times. The controls are ancient. There's a picture in the middle there of the control and you don't see it, but the others, there's usually a sticky note on it that says do not touch. That's our advanced control system. And again, it's 30, 40 years old, the control system. They can't buy parts for it anymore. So you can't really fix it. We got the quote of $250,000 because the ventilation is not working well. We're not working in the cafeteria, the gym, and in the band room area. And I guess the, the last piece that we've been dealing with recently is we've had warmer days in the fall and in the spring, we have classrooms overheating. And there's a, there's a quote in here from one of our board members, Mallory Tripp, with three students in the school. I think it was from last year. I think it was, I think it was fall or spring, but here like an even five degree day or so, and she and the three, five classrooms are on the second story and the, and the 96 edition to the building. And that room gets a lot of sun and they, they, it gets really hot. And we put in window mounted air conditioning units and it's still over 80 degrees. So you'll, the story there where you've got, the kids are trying to write and they're literally sweating, dripping while they're trying to. So the HVAC system we have is not sufficient. So we worked with EEI to try to figure out what's the most cost effective solution. And Carrie from EEI helped us with a school evolving renovation fund. And we were awarded about $1.9 million. That was the highest award in the state. The next highest was like 900,000. So we were the top by a million dollars. And what that award is, is a no interest loan with 30% is forgiven. So about $580,000 of that will be forgiven. And we will use that for the HVAC system and some other energy efficiency upgrades. It's an annual payment of $136,000 for 10 years. Again, that's zero interest. The, I'll let Carrie and Adam talk more details about the actual system and what it provides, but it'll allow us to have, actually be able to control the heat in the room. It'll be much more efficient. And we will have cooling capacity through, through dehumidification. So it's everything that we need. So between the, the loan, the no interest SRF loan, and we're getting, I think, $470,000 and efficiency main rebates, we feel like this is the most cost effective way to fix something that is essentially broken. So I'll let Carrie and Adam, if you want to sort of take it from there and talk more about the, the system and.
Before, before you do that, if you can just clarify for this group, I know you all presented to the Budget Committee on Saturday, which we greatly appreciate, but the total cost for the project and then these numbers. So the total cost is like 2.4 million.
Yep, 2.4 is the total cost. And then the remaining cost in addition to that 1.3 for the main bond, it's going to be all covered through efficiency main grants. So, or efficiency main incentives. So the only payment to the school district is for the main bond bank of that yearly payment. The remainder will be covered through the incentives.
So the part that you're seeking approval from the public for is the bond bank 1.3 million, right?
Correct.
With $136,000 a year for 10 years, payback, no interest.
Correct.
Is the Makerspace tied into this?
No. Yeah, that's got a brand new heat pump system. That's all set.
Okay.
So I just wanted the Select Board to know what, you know, what the totals were and stuff. So if you want to talk about the need for this.
Yep. Yeah. Currently with your system, you have a new condensing propane boiler for the heating, but the ventilation in the buildings is about 30 to 40 years old. And between the lack of controls that are functioning on it and then the system equipment itself, it has failed. So we've looked at a few different avenues to accomplish both, either a more efficient way to ventilate as well as potential to get cooling into the building with a VRF system and dehumidification through the energy recovery system. I can let Adam kind of go into where the breakouts of those systems are because we have a few different sections. We have a VRF, which is a variable refrigerant flow section, which will be in the classroom. That's a larger heat pump style system where each individual classroom is now going to have control of heat and cooling individually. So if one classroom, if classroom A is hot, they can be a little bit warmer. And if classroom B is cold, then they can have cooling. So that will be the system that is going into the classroom section and then we'll be refurbishing those air handlers. So Adam, you can, can give a deep scope dive.
Sure. I'll try to share, but I'll, I'll just speak while that's happening. I do have a few preliminary drawings. So the plan is that there are two existing air handlers. They are functional, but let's, but are way out of date. There is no energy recovery, really an old style. There are two of those, one in the, the attic space on the classroom wing, the 1996 wing, I believe it is. And then there's another one on the main level in the attic space. The plan is to bring those back to life, replace some parts and pieces and make them as functional as possible. And what we're looking to do is add an ERV. It's sort of a cabinet style. So instead of being an entire unit, it works supplemental to the existing air handler and will provide energy recovery. We have two additional energy recovery units. Those will be mounted on the roof, most likely the low roof towards the, the back right of the building as you're looking at it. One will be dedicated for the gym space. And the other one would be dedicated for the cafeteria as well as a little bit of air for makeup, air in the kitchen and then into, I believe it might refer to as the band room. Also on that roof will be a pair of condensers like Carrie was talking about for the VRF system. One of the condensers would serve the main level classrooms and the other one would serve the VRF system in the, the two-story classroom way.
We did a little bit of a balancing act when it came to trying to find the best solution because we wanted to utilize the existing investment of the gas condensing boiler for the heating where we could on the efficient heating side, but then also replace in the most cost effective way ventilation and get the dehumidification. Because of the location of the classroom ventilation units, it made more cost sense to keep those in place and refurbish them and utilize the efficiency main $18 a square foot per rebate to get cooling into the classroom spaces and then do dehumidification on the ERVs for the other section. So now we've have adequate ventilation. So it solves your ventilation needs as well as now your cooling needs long term. And part of this project will be a full controls upgrade for that system. So each individual component is going to be talking to each other. You won't have one area running on heat and the other on cooling. The entire system is going to be tied into one controlled front end.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What, in terms of timing, if this is approved, when would it happen and be up and running?
The construction would begin this summer. And I think Carrie, you said the, the total completion by like October-ish?
Yep.
Yeah. So we would have to complete it by October for the efficiency main incentives. We're not concerned about timing at all. Once we get equipment ordered and complete this project in the summer.
And anything that could potentially spill over to the start of school would be, you know, odds and ends. It'd be no heavy lifting or really disturbing work at that point. The bulk of the, the heavy lifting would happen prior to the kids coming back for school.
So I know this was discussed on Saturday also that you're obviously eager to do all of this work when the kids are not in the school. And the school budget vote is June. Let's say it's June 10th.
Yeah, or 11th.
Something like that. But I think that Carrie mentioned on Saturday that for you to do the work when school is out, you actually need to order things before June. Is that right?
Yeah, we do what's called, and this happens a lot with school projects and especially because of budget seasons and getting kind of, so we do what we call a notice to proceed, which allows us, you just said we've gone through, you know, the first steps of approval process moving forward with the project. We just have this last vote and we kind of just, we will order the equipment that we need to so that it's all ready for when we can start work.
So who would bear the risk if by some chance the vote didn't pass on June 10th?
So it's, it's two full questions. Technically, there will be a contract with the school that says, hey, here's the amount of money that we're going to be spending on equipment. And then if case the project does not go forward, then yes, that would be, that cost for the equipment that we buy would be a responsibility to pay back. However, what we typically say, because this is more common than that, if the project is not going to go through after we order the equipment, we have plenty of other areas that we utilize that equipment. And so a lot of times EEI will either buy the equipment back from the school district or just not utilize that contract or we can send it to another job and utilize it from there. So there's a, I don't know of an occurrence where either we have equipment that's come in and either the project hasn't gone through or we have not found a place for spare equipment in the summer when there's lead times. So that's typically what we would suggest is we would buy the equipment back or not do that because we would utilize it.
Do other Select Board members have any questions about the need for the system or the cost of the system?
I know I wouldn't want to be in an 85 degree.
No. Yeah. I, I don't have any doubt, but that you, the school district needs this and that it's clear that you've worked very hard to keep the costs down, to get grants and efficiency main things. And for those of us who are newer on the Select Board, one of the things that's been complicated about this is the relationship between the school district in quotes and the town in quotes. And because your budget is separately prepared and voted on, we usually, our only role with respect to your workings are to approve the warrant that goes for the school budget. And what's trickier with this is that it's the town that's being asked to, to borrow this money and pay it back. And so this group, you know, has a responsibility we don't normally have over your workings at the school. And one of the things that I asked on Saturday was who owns the school property? And Mike immediately provided us with the deed that shows that the town owns the property. Because again, as a lawyer, I'm thinking, wait, if the school owns the property, how does the town borrow the money? But that, that's been cleared up. Clearly, the town owns the property. If the town is borrowing the money, that's appropriate.
Well, we want to keep its value. Of course.
Right. Oh, right. And we want to provide a good environment for the kids in the school. We all.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When we, when you're presented with this, doesn't it seem to make fiscal responsibility the way we procure the money to do this? With the zero investment and we're using energy back?
Yes. I, my only issue is having, you know, been the liaison to the Budget Committee for the past year. And I think I've attended every meeting. Maybe I missed one. I never heard one peep about this. Like the first, these five people are hearing about this is in the last two weeks. And obviously you all have been working hard on this for a year, as Mike said. And so because it's the same pocket that taxpayers take money out of to pay for everything in town, the school, the ambulance, the fire department.
People know about it though, because our community people read our school board minutes and they come to our school board meetings. So the community is not in the dark about this.
Well, I think that the school.
And I'd like to add, like Jennifer and I are both elective officials here too. We go through the same process where we get on the ballot through a nomination process. We take an oath. So there is a, a level of town involvement by being governed by a town elected board also.
Right. And I don't, I'm not being critical of that. I feel like, you know, this may well be as much our failure as if we haven't paid as much attention to things that might impact, you know, the town's ability to borrow money or spend on other things. So one of the things that I would like to do going forward is make sure, you know, that we have a, a more formal structure, either a Select Board liaison coming to your meetings or. Well, but she's not, she comes as a, because she wants to come. We don't have anybody who's like assigned to go and report back what's on your budget. And we don't, we have occasional reports from the superintendent, but.
I mean, I see this part is different because although you can look at our budget anytime, this part of putting it in a separate section, that part is different.
Right. That, that's what's different is that the town is assuming $1.3 million in debt that some of us weren't expecting to be making, factoring this in. And so.
The only thing I think is different is, is part of our school budget, it just happens to be out this way, saying this part of our school budget. We're making the payments because the school is part of our school budget. I, I'm currently the board chair.
Right.
And we would always welcome, always welcome anybody here to our budget. So I don't, if you want to call yourselves a, you know, an appointed liaison, that's perfectly fine with me. But you're welcome to come to every board meeting and to come to every finance coming meeting. And we have budget all the month of March. You know, so that's.
Yeah, I, right. And I, and I think that clearly the superintendent and the town manager, you know, can and do talk to each other now. I just think that any significant capital investments that are going to impact the taxpayers in town, it would be useful for us to be all thinking ahead.
I don't know, because we've been talking about this for over a year.
Right. But we, this is, some of us didn't know about this till like the last two weeks.
I, I think a big thing too is that, you know, that we don't even have the capital improvement plan and we could benefit from one. And so it's on my list to develop one in the coming year. I think once I have that developed so that we can do some longer range, more sustainable planning, I can, you know, run that by you all and see what else is on, you know, your docket.
Something Mike has done for us, which we didn't have at the beginning, which is, it is a helpful thing, Brandon, because to look ahead, what buses will need to be replaced, you know, the roof, all that stuff. But that's a good thing to have a plan.
Right. And, and, and we don't have it and, and need it. And so I think once it is developed, I can, you know, make sure that, you know, aware of what's on, yeah, what's on y'all's plan and we can make sure that.
Yeah, that became apparent in, in trying to work up the section in the comprehensive plan about capital investment. And so this is something I will have fun adding now.
We can also provide, in our audits of the building, we did do a full HVAC and building study for long-term planning for the school building itself. So that's something that we can provide as well. That shows immediate need, intermediate need as in three to five years out, five plus years out.
Yeah. And, and, and for instance, comprehensive plan covers the next 10. So that's the type of thing that we could add in.
But when in the draft comprehensive plan, we didn't even list the school as a property owned by the town. I mean, I really think a lot of us were thinking.
But that, part of that was the issue that not a lot of parents or school age children participate at the beginning in the comprehensive, right?
Well.
That's true.
Everybody got some of the surveys.
But there were, but there were lots of surveys and so forth. Somehow we, somehow we missed this. So let's, let's fix it for the future. That's all.
Right. Do any other Select Board member, Tammy or Wendy, do you have questions or?
No, I mean, I agree with you about all the planning issues. And from an indebtedness standpoint, I understand that you guys are making the payment, but we're carrying the debt as the town, right?
Right.
And, you know, it does impact our ability to borrow things. So it's important that there is communication back and forth. And I, I think, I don't want to be the dead horse. We, we've talked about it. But it does matter to the town's finances that this is happening. Even when there's zero interest and your guys are going to make the payments, it matters. And I was going to ask Irene if she had any comment about this from an accounting standpoint.
Basically, the, the money to pay the bill, it's going to come out of the school's budget. But as far as the project itself, it's kind of a, we don't have a choice but to do it. We can't have the kids, then we've got to have the kids in a comfortable environment in order to be able to learn. It's going to be a waste of everybody's time if it's 85 degrees in there. And the system that we have can't be fixed. It's, it's time to replace it.
Well, I think the question for you, Irene, was more about the borrowing and the impact on the town.
What, what you can borrow is based on a percentage of your town's total valuation. And so this doesn't put us anywhere near that threshold.
It's 5% of your total valuation and our valuation, 1.4 billion.
Right.
So it's not really an issue.
Yes, it is in this respect. It is going to affect the mill rate. So the amount that people are paying per thousand dollars of valuation. And so it's, it's nice if we can properly explain where we are with the mill rate in any given year. So this, this, this gives us a little bit more explanation. It's fine.
Mike, you wanted to say something?
I would just say that, you know, we obviously, you know, we're very aware of the mill rate and, you know, we do all our budget workshops. We do explanations depending on, on our impact.
Oh, you've been, you've been very good about it, yeah.
So, but no, I, I give, I understand that we all want to be on the same page. You know, I mean, it's good.
Is the, the pressure giving to complete everything that you need to do within the school. But if something happened and the town votes not to approve this much money, is there something where this is done in like stage one, stage two? Could it be?
I don't think we get any in the free funding.
Yeah, technically, yes. Can the project be phased? The, the short answer is yes. The difference with that is right now we're getting, because of the incentives and the timeline that we're on with the incentives and the rebates, we're getting a two-point, the project total is two point four five. But the only amount that the school is paying back is the one point three at zero percent through the main bond bank. If you were to wait and phase it out, another avenue would be a tax exempt lease purchase. But those rates are four point one right now. So it's a mix and that's where it's been a process of trying to find the best happy medium between solving these issues and capitalizing on any grants and funding that we can get to lower this cost so that you don't either have to take out, you know, one lump sum of the VRF, for example. I want to say that's around nine hundred thousand for an install cost because it's a very expensive upfront cost. But we're getting five hundred thousand of that through efficiency main rebates. So it's, that's the reason why there hasn't been a look at doing this in a phased approach.
Well, by doing this, all at once, you're saving quite a bit.
We're gonna say.
I have a question. I understand, and we can do a better job about reaching out when we see some big cost coming up, like eventually a roof or whatever. What would be different if a year and a half ago, when we started talking about it, I reached out and said, hey, I want to make sure you know this is on the horizon. What would be different right now?
Well, I know about it before today.
Right, then what would be different, the bottom line?
I don't think we're arguing about the need for it. We're just telling, we're just expressing our need to have a better sense of what the budget's going to be. Because it, it affects the overall budget and mill rate and tax issues for the town. That's all we're saying.
And, and I think as we participate in the town budget, which is uh, for this past year of what we collected in property taxes, fifty-two percent went to the school, thirty-seven percent came to the town, and something like eleven percent went to the county. So this group spent, and the budget committee spent a lot of time going through, you know, the need for the harbor masters, new boat, or, you know, tanker trucks for the fire department. And, you know, we really could use more than Steve Jarrett in our public works department and working really hard to keep that budget under control. So to feel like something that's one point three million over ten years wasn't on our radar, you know, that's a lot of money. That's right.
Yeah, I saw there were two carpets for fifth grade and I asked, why is there two carpets? You know, one was actually the musical carpet. Like I, I took a lot of effort and pride in what I do going through the budget. I'm at every finance committee meeting and the indication like we're just spending.
No, no one is saying that. No one is saying that. It's just because of the size of this number and the surprise factor. So that's the difference.
Welcome to come to the meetings and we can carry it numerous meetings, giving presentations too.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate all you're doing and I think we can easily work out communication in the future. And I think you've made a great presentation. Obviously, it feels a little last minute, but I'm a hundred percent in favor of it.
I would just encourage, I mean, to get more involved, I would encourage you to come to the budget workshop. And I know some of you have been at the budget workshops and we used to have those in the February board meeting, the three budget workshops we held every week this, this month. We go through everything in detail, um, projecting. So, I mean, I think one way and we, and like we've had, you know, Suzie's been really involved. She's asked a lot of great questions. She's helped us think things through. So I really encourage you to become, like, join that process, have someone come to that and report out, and then you'll get everything. Um, and I've, and I can, I've shared the slides from those. So there's more we can do on that front, let me know.
I re- I really think it's the, the big ticket capital expenditure, especially capital expenditures. You know, we're not in a position to be saying what your curriculum should be or your band program or, that's not going to happen. It's only because the town is being asked to borrow this money. Um, and it's a lot of money. That's the only reason there is concern. Not that we don't, clearly you've done a lot of work to keep these costs down. So um, is there any other discussion about this warrant?
I just wanted to say, it's not a surprise. I go to all the school board meetings and I know that this has been on the radar for some time. And the company came and did a great presentation. They were there two or three times and did presentations for the school board and people that were in the audience. So it's not, it's not a surprise. You just gotta pay attention.
So does somebody um, want to make a motion to submit the, this warrant article that we received today um, to the voters at the school budget meeting in June?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any other discussion?
It's just, it's recommending whether to vote yes or no.
Well, the, no, there's, I'm going to have two votes. One is whether this warrant goes on the ballot and then I'm going to ask the select board if they want to recommend yes or no, or not recommend. So all in favor of putting this warrant article on the ballot, that's five.
My move is the select board recommends a yes vote on this.
Let me just throw in that the budget committee had a fabulous presentation on Saturday and enthusiastically endorsed them.
I'll second Ben's motion.
Any other discussion about that? Wendy? No, all, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you all for coming.
Thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Our meeting for exciting.
It's slippery out there.
Yes. You might want to go up the steps and go out the front door and not. No, we don't want you to fall.
Even though we do have a great ambulance service.
Okay, so now we're going to um, look at budget items that we didn't cover when we approved the budget. Was that two weeks ago? Yeah, so let the, and if you pull out the um, the document that Tara prepared, that is what gets printed in the um, annual report. There, I don't know if the one on the table includes updates since we talked at three o'clock.
I will mention the only update it doesn't is at the top in the formatting process. Your, your, the rest of your agreed is in greetings and there's like one sentence on there. I had to expand that. So the one that you signed is correct. That's the only thing. We've gone through and made all the.
Are there any more?
It's that one. No.
And I can just let you all know that we also, the budget committee discussed all of these warrant articles and supported all of them.
So. So let's look first at article eighteen, which is second to last page. If you remember when we went through the budget with the budget committee, we talked about all of the expenditures, but we neglected to um, have this group approve what we anticipate will come in for revenue during this budget year. And that's what's in article eighteen. So um, I'll make a motion that we approve the revu- revenue as set forth in article eighteen.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Revenue is not usually controversial.
Right, so all in favor? That's unanimous. And Brandon, you want to tell us about amending the town office utilities line?
Yeah, there was just essentially a two thousand dollars of utilities that was under the EMS department that should have got moved over to the town office. As you'll remember, um, we're combining all of the expenses for this building. So the property maintenance, the utilities um, into one department to give an accurate representation of what it costs to run this facility. Um, and two thousand dollars didn't make it over. And so um.
Which article, the which article?
So this is uh, article five, uh, there is a utilities line.
Yeah, I see it's fourth line down.
Oh, yeah.
Fourteen thousand.
That should be more, should have two thousand added to it.
Nope, it, it should, fourteen.
Includes the new.
Yes, you all approved twelve thousand dollars for that line when we met, when we reviewed it in this meeting. I'm asking that it be bumped up to fourteen, the budget committee approved it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we have fourteen thousand in the utilities line in article five.
And that's coming from which other article? That's what I'm getting at.
It, it's not. It's an additional grant.
It got lost.
It got taken out of EMS. It didn't get moved into.
Okay. That was clear to me.
Any other discussion about utilities? All in favor? That's everyone. The, so um, Suzie or Brandon, you want to explain the recommendation regarding?
Yeah.
Undesignated fund?
Historically, there has been an amount taken from the undesignated fund to help offset the overall commitment. Uh, I recommended to the budget committee that we do not use any money from the undesignated fund to help offset the commitment this year. Uh, there's a number of reasons. One, currently our undesignated fund is very low because we're still waiting on a reimbursement from uh, EDA for money spent at Port Clyde Landing. Uh, secondly, our undesignated fund has not grown to cover two months of expenses since we adopted the EMS department. And so taking money from it uh, to offset the commitment doesn't seem responsible at this point.
And that's really um, not a change from the budget you reviewed, but we did not vote on them. So I'll make a motion that we um, not take any money from undesignated funds this year to reduce people's taxes.
Why would you need to take a vote on this if we're not doing it?
Well, so really, you, you, you don't need a vote on that specific one. You need to vote on this warrant as a whole. It is an article in this warrant. Because it is different than what we've done for the last several years. And if you go back the last ten years, there's been some figure in there as low as fifty thousand, as much as two hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, I only went back ten. Um, but there has always been money. And so I wanted there to at least be discussion noting it before you voted on this as a whole.
So we don't need to vote on that.
No, when you vote on this, you will vote on every article that is in here.
So.
I have to say, I went into the office to do battle because I, we've done it forever and I thought that there should be some contribution and walked out of the office school depending totally in support.
So that's one, two, three out of seven. Um, now, one of the things.
The interest on delinquent taxes, the interest on free pay taxes.
Right, and, and you.
Yeah, the, the fifty thousand slide, the slide between. Uh, I didn't bring that.
A lot of these are, what show up in there every year. So the seven point five percent on delinquent taxes is the maximum amount that is set. Uh, the prepaid taxes is that rate minus four percent.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other pieces around.
So just on that, the, the budget committee had, had believed on Saturday that the delinquent tax percentage could be raised to seven point six five percent.
No, 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 no.
No.
That was.
Oh, it was a typo? Okay, seven point five. Well, good. I, good, we're catching the typos in their meeting minutes.
Absolutely.
Um. So the fifty thousand was being moved.
It's uh, it's the one that you can move amongst um.
Money from the undesignated fund to cover overdrawn lines that are already appropriated. It's in there every year.
Dollars for abatement was the other piece. And that's all of the seven.
Okay. So um, I.
So I think I agree with all of those.
And I don't know if any of you looked at the one that was emailed earlier. There were some other errors that have now been corrected. Um, I'm still looking at the one that was emailed before, but.
But they were corrected to reflect the budget that you all have already voted on and approved.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, so um, I'll make a motion that we approve the war- this warrant um, to be submitted to the public for them to vote on how much they want to spend on the town's um, upkeep. And that this be printed in the annual.
Provided.
Right. And the services we all are grateful for. Um, and be printed in the annual report. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? That's everybody. So we have a liquor license for the barn cafe.
Yep, and I have not received any complaints or comments or anything like that.
Um, is, are they in year five or past year five?
I'm not sure.
Because that affects the public hearing thing. Well, you'll figure that out.
Okay.
Okay, if, if.
Got to be five years.
I would, I think it must be.
I think they're there.
I think so too.
I move we approve that.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? That's five. Okay, so now Tara has prepared for us the warrant for um, the polls, what will be printed when people go to the polls on May twelfth between eight in the morning and eight at night, right Tara?
Yes.
So that is this two-page warrant. Did anybody have any questions about that or the summaries of the ordinances or the leases?
The one that was originally emailed at you said that the lighthouse is responsible for the upkeep of the Fisherman's Memorial. That's not true. That was a typo. We removed that. So it's no longer listed.
So did people have any other questions or issues? Um, I guess I have a question about in the description of the old library lease. Well, they all say maintenance of the structures, but that is not all. Certainly, that's not all, that's not what's being maintained at the lighthouse.
I mean, just keep in mind, this is not binding. The lease is binding. If you're worried that it will confuse voters, then we can make a change.
I, I think that we, where it's, for example, the sidewalk at the lighthouse. You know, Nat talked about how you know, they, they're working on that. It's on their list and they have a little sign careful of the sidewalks, you know, not in good repair. So I do think that, um, and of course, I wish I thought of this Tara before this minute since I was giving you all my other.
Can you just say as detailed in the lease itself?
Yes.
Yeah, and not put any more specific.
Yeah, just put responsible for the maintenance of the property as detailed in the lease.
Yeah.
That would be.
Maintenance of the property, yeah, and structure.
Because.
As the, yeah.
The lease is the governing document.
It's detailed in the lease, yeah.
Thank you, Wendy. And it'll say that for all three of them.
So. So maintenance.
After maintenance, just say of the property as detailed in the lease.
That would cover it.
We've got to go do that before we sign it. Okay, well, is there any other um, discussion about this warrant?
How do you pronounce this?
Georges River Regional Self-Management Grism. Okay, all in favor? That's all five of us. Thank you. That's all five of us. Thank you, everyone. And then there's one more. What's that? Have I seen that? Sign warrant for a town meeting.
That's what you all just, you did that right before this.
Was a town meeting, yeah, all the articles. Eighteen twenty-four article.
We we just did that.
The polls and the town meeting, aren't they different?
Yeah. This is the town meeting. You all just did that.
Oh, the, this thing, the budget, this is just the budget in my opinion.
Well, it's not just the budget, it also has the piece.
That's true, there's other stuff at the back.
Yeah, there are other things in there.
They do all involve spending money, so, okay, well, good, we're done with all those things then. All right, then.
For example, the the piece around setting, uh, policies for the seaside cemetery, that that is in there as well.
Right. That's Article twenty-seven. And the multi-year contracts is in there again.
Yep.
All right. All right, so all those important things have been attended to and we'll sign that when Tara comes back. So you want to do the town manager report?
Yeah. We are working on closing out some of the FEMA projects, which is exciting. And then otherwise, just a lot of sort of spring maintenance happening, uh, getting ready for resurfacing this summer.
Are we getting the actual FEMA money? Is that actually coming to us and in our account?
We don't have any money from FEMA yet, but we are taking steps that are optimistic.
Okay, good answer.
Yes.
Good answer. All right, I just wondered about that.
It is a wor- it is a worry.
Yeah, but there are, you know, there are certain projects that they no longer need anything from us for. And so that, that is a big hurdle, yeah. And then, uh, the the bid for the lighthouse repair, that will go out this week. Uh, Gartley and Dorsky will be administering that piece of it. And then trying to sort of, we had a road plan in place and now need to sort of re-survey the condition of our roads based on the spring that we've had. And so that is, those are some of the major pieces going on.
Well, and that's something that, um, in the same conversation with the the school and major expenditures, they're planning to repave all the school parking lots this summer for like two hundred and ten thousand dollars or something. And here, Brandon, during our budget process, reduced how much we're gonna spend on road paving from his recommended a hundred and fifty thousand down to a hundred. So that's another example of where I feel like, you know, we should just have all these big projects on a joint list so that.
Capital investment plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you've given up to the school, boy, does it need repaving. You practically break an axle going up the road, so.
Well, no matter which road you take there, you'll see that.
On Wendy's name, does that matter?
Oh, it says princess or something.
I got a call today from, well, I got an email today from Joyce, who was the property owner on Ripley Creek Road where the junkyard is. Uh, the email was from her daughter's email, but signed Joyce saying that, um, at this point she is not in favor of the junkyard moving to Walston Road, which she also owns. Uh, and so, or the property on Walston Road. Um, because it was from her daughter's email, I wanted to have a phone call with her just to verify. Um, I, she called me back. I was in a meeting and so I'm working on that, but there is a chance that that is not happening. And so then we'll have to sort of go a different route of getting that one cleaned up without a permitted location for it. So just figured I would keep you all in the loop, knowing that that's come up in several meetings.
You know, I did, um, when was it? It was it'll be three weeks on Wednesday. I was there and I smelled it. It was my first time that I've.
That's the other issue. Has that been resolved at all?
No.
No, what I've heard from folks that live down there is that it's gotten better. And so, uh, we weren't gonna test again until things warmed up a bit. Just knowing that we're getting close to that point and we will be able to if the smell.
I did smell something, but I still maintain it doesn't smell like sewage. It smells like a rotting corpse or something. Oh, well, that's way better. Come on, you've all had some dead animal on your property. That's what it smells like.
Well, it smells bad.
Sex husband, I don't know. No, it smells like, I don't know, there was some dead giant creature at my house and it smelled like that. So I just didn't think it smelled like sewage. It didn't smell like a, a malfunctioning septic system to me. And they haven't found any evidence of that.
We haven't, no. Um, and the, the water test didn't reveal any evidence of that either, so. We will keep working on it, but I will say there there's not a very clear path forward in this. There's a strange smell and nothing that points to any evidence. And then lastly, we are working with the Happy Clam on putting in a sidewalk or crosswalk, uh, at that location. They're working on getting plans that would be approved by DOT and then we would fill the highway opening permit to do so. So knowing that the busy season is around.
At the speed people come in on, on one hundred and one on River Road, that you would want flashing lights for the crosswalk. I mean, you just don't want people thinking it's a crosswalk, I can just start up because people are going forty miles an hour and come to that point. I try not to myself.
My guess is some of those considerations will be in the, in the permit, uh, in the plan.
Yeah.
You know, I think DOT makes recommendations like that and so.
Yeah, it just makes me uneasy picturing it there.
When do you expect us to get those new flashing feedback signs, feedback signs?
Uh, I would say, I don't know, I'll have to check on that. They were supposed to be ordered this spring. I don't believe that they have been yet, so.
Because that is a really good place for one soon before, you know, right where it's.
Well, we typically put the mobile sign out there.
Yeah.
It's been out there, yeah, yeah.
Right, but it's moved around and I think during the summer, yeah. It makes sense to have one as you're entering the tenants' harbor village and the Port Clyde Village and then the third one that moves around.
Would the crosswalk be serving the parking lot that Greg put in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have any other town manager?
Nope.
Issues, do anybody have any questions?
Plenty of issues, but nothing.
All right then, um, we need to start adding the TIF committee to the committee reports, so.
Oh, that was the, that is the other piece, actually, was that you all. Oh, you grab it, that's great.
So, um, as you will recall, at our last meeting, we approved Alexa Cunningham, Carol Daniels and Georg Hauves and Van Thompson to serve on the ad hoc TIF committee and we need to sign their names to their appointments. So, committee reports, planning board.
Uh, planning board, at the last meeting, there was a workshop regarding when, um, things need site plan review. Um, and, um, they discussed what information needs to be part of site plan review. Um, we talked about the junkyard permit application and I heard what Brandon just said, but we talked about it in general about, um, the municipal officers of the select board will be handling any junkyard permit applications going forward, but does it need a site plan review? And I think they eventually, um, agreed that despite the select board handling the permit application, the planning board will still do a site plan review. Is that right, Brandon? Is that what you?
Yes, and, uh, so in addition to the junkyard permit, a building and land use permit is required as well.
So they would handle that part, all of that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
Now, you all will still have a bit of responsibility. There are pieces in the permit that are dictated by state statute and so you all will need to be familiar with that.
We'll learn all that when we.
And I just, I I just want to add that there was a, um, site visit for the subdivision on Walston and Turkey Cove and, um, Tammy and I attended and looked at where the lots are and, um, yeah, it was informative.
So tell me where that is, so.
Well, interestingly, it's right across the street almost from the the junk, the original junkyard permit application location. So Lot Seven is right next to the transfer station when you come in. And then if you walk down Walston, heading southeast where it joins um, Turkey Cove, there's the other lots.
Southwest, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
So they're on, they're on the south side of Walston.
Yes.
Before you get to the split of Turkey.
Well, no, they continue around the corner because each, um, lot is three to four acres in size. And, um, there's seven lots altogether. I think there's one area where there's two lots back to back, um, and they share a driveway. And it was just interesting to see back there. There's old roads, there's old stone walls. Yeah, it was interesting to see. I mean, there'll be big lots if it goes through.
It's quite wet when you get down.
When you get down, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Lots of wetlands.
Did, did you say that the, the subdivision developer is contemplating donating one of the lots to the town?
Donating, I, Brandon may speak to it, I think he wants to sell it.
Yeah, holding a lot for the town to purchase.
If we're.
If they're interested, Lot Seven, which is abutting the transfer station.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he probably had more problems selling it.
And he realizes. Well, never mind.
No, it was in good, it was in good faith. He had been approached about it before he even had the plans to subdivide it and so.
Okay.
Um, he'd known that we were interested for a long time.
Yeah. It's just not something that would happen quickly, even if everybody were on board. So, but that's, that's okay. All right.
That's it. Nothing with the, um, appeals board.
Harbor Committee, their meeting's coming up.
Meeting's coming up.
Budget Committee, I think we've addressed all. Budget Committee matters, Cemetery.
Um, the Cemetery Committee will be meeting April third, four thirty here at the town office.
And the Emergency Services Committee will be meeting tomorrow night. Um, we haven't that since the last report I gave on that. The Comprehensive Plan Committee had a workshop on Saturday and they have couple more workshops before the Comprehensive Plan comes to this group at, um, our special Select Board Workshop on April twenty-eighth. One issue that they're grappling with right now that, um, I would flag is um, growth management areas. Currently, our town has two growth management areas that are defined. They're in Port Clyde Village and Tenants Harbor Village. And the state law, um, dictates that you have to spend, I think it's.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent of your municipal, um.
Capital investment, gross capital investment.
In a growth management area. So one of the questions that we are asking our state representative at the, basically the planning office is whether if we're contemplating future growth in a particular area, do we need to have that nailed down before this plan gets submitted to the state and considered by the community and voted on? Or could we approve it with the two growth management areas that we have in there now? And if and when we anticipate growth in a particular area, how would we go about amending the comprehensive plan and identifying new comprehen- you know, growth management areas? Because obviously we're aware right now that the CDC owns or plans hopes to develop a housing, um, affordable housing project along Route seventy-three and and we don't know yet whether, um, what they envision would work with our current um, land or use ordinance or would require some different.
Or how TIF funding might influence that.
I never quite understand the growth areas because you know, there's all kinds of situations in terms of who owns the land and utilities. I mean, when I always think of Tenants Harbor, that's the area for the Water District, or it could be. And there's not enough capacity really for big growth. And so if, if there was a need for water, the Water District would have to drill a new well. And our bylaws don't allow us to pay for that. So I mean, I guess if it's all like airy-fairy, like it might happen at some point, it's fine. But I always feel like I need to say that there may not be water service from the Water District depending on the funding and depending on whether a developer would pay for things.
Yes, and I thi- I think for the existing growth management areas like in Tenants Harbor, um, when somebody has an application before the planning board to build something, whatever that may be, part of the considerations for the planning board are, is there water available? And so, um, that's part of the question that's creating a time pressure about how thoughtful a process could we have? If we wanted to articulate or define new growth management areas, presumably we would want to make sure that, because obviously those aren't gonna have a Water District. They're not, those areas are not in Port Clyde or Tenants Harbor. You know, are you, how much homework would we want to do before the, you know, drawing a lot around some property boundaries and saying this is a new growth management area? So that is a, a, a complicated thing that's, um, hopefully we'll know the answer to soon. But among, you know, that's a.
What?
Yeah.
What is the money that is tied to it? Seventy-five percent of our capital?
Your, your, your capital investment for growth, seventy-five percent has to go to these designated areas. Which is fine. I mean, you know, that's, that's part of why it's a designated area. Uh, again, that's very much up in the air in terms of TIF and what you might do. I mean, who knows, TIF might want to.
Well, and.
You know, if we had the ability to expand water supply, couldn't we do this in Tenants Harbor? It's doubtful, but maybe, you know, these are things that have to really be looked at and that's why it's, uh, sort of in flux where we are with, uh, designating any new growth areas. We really don't have them identified yet.
Well, aren't we projected for a declining population anyway? If, or at least flat, I, I don't believe that we're projected for any.
But, but the state is, is saying we want designated growth areas.
Right, and so.
And the ones we have have been in place for the past ten, fifteen years.
There are, there are a lot of different competing considerations because when we did the survey of all the residents in town, most people want to keep the character of the town pretty much the way that it is. And, and yet, there is a concern about, for example, the high cost of housing. And so it may be that we will want to make some land use ordinance changes to accommodate more dense housing development in some places for that reason. So it's complicated and these terms like growth management area and these municipal growth expenditures, they're all defined in the law. So what they call spending on growth, you know, I don't know the answer to that. Because a, as we were sitting there talking about this, I'm thinking, well, what about the million dollars we spent on the Port Clyde landing? You know, that wasn't growth, but.
Well, it's also located in a growth area, right?
Yes, it already is, so that's good. But, you know, there's a lot you're supposed to be thinking about.
Going near you financially.
So, anyway, so that's my report from the Comprehensive Plan Committee. And, you know, just know that when you see the draft plan, things like this are going to be in there and pay attention. So Steve, the Conservation Commission. Okay, Shelfish Committee, anything new?
Um, they met on last Tuesday, Monty, Tink and Warren. And Jeff wrote him, the warden, he mentioned that he's dealing with a high bacteria count and salt pond, which has tributaries that run into it. And he's feeling it's from a farm that is located down a small stream and the bacteria is running all the way up into the pond. And they're looking, he said they're also looking at a possible temporary closure at Watts Cove due to a fuel leak. This has been going on for some time. He doesn't understand why it's not being taken care of, but they're dealing with that.
From a private residence?
Uh-huh.
So if, if there's a closure like that, how is the public made aware of that?
Um, I think it goes online and then they put up, like they would post, they'd post signs that there's no digging, it's closure and why it's closed.
To clamors.
Right. And I would assume if it's a fuel leak, it will probably involve more than just clamming.
Yeah.
Be able to do anything in there until it's cleaned up and tested and then approved to be open again.
So I'm thinking, Brandon, maybe you should connect with Jeff because if it's, there's a fuel issue, there might be considerations for neighboring properties beyond clamming that we might want to post something somewhere. Think about that.
I think Terry might be aware of it.
Did this happen this winter or was it the fall even?
He said it's been going on for over a month. And I think the D E P has been down there to look at it from what he said. And then the code enforcement office.
I believe the fire department was there as well.
I, I'd like to, if you could get us a report on that for our next meeting, Brandon, I'd like to hear about that.
Yeah.
What's happening and how serious it is.
That's a worry, right.
Snow is playing.
Near the Maltese house and around there. Solid Waste Committee?
Um, they will be meeting on April seventeenth at seven thirty A M. Here at the town office.
Excellent. Parks and Rec?
I was trying to catch up with that, but Ashley was out sick today. So I can't tell you what they covered the last meeting, but there's another one due.
Resilience, we will call you by your right name now.
I'll, I'll add one Parks and Rec update. Very loosely, I don't even know if the committee is even aware yet, but there's a project happening. Stu Rich lives in town. He's working with an eighth grader. And the eighth grader wants to build a, can you rec, you described, you described on this, right? And so.
That was in our minutes from last.
Yeah, and so I, I have a meeting this week with some folks from the library board. They had some questions and concerns around ownership and liability and, and all of that. So that is moving forward and I'll have an update for y'all next time.
Good. Resilience.
So we had fleet companies show up for our walkthrough in Port Clyde. I was thrilled to death.
Wow.
I know. So now we're waiting for April twenty-sixth. I believe that's when the RFPs, the proposals are, have to be on Brandon's desk. That's really, and have you received questions from anybody?
I have not.
So, um.
They showed up? Sounds like.
I know. I was really excited and.
Sound like calling a plumber.
And now we're on Tenderhoeks waiting. We should hear about our grant to hire a climate action plan writer in the next ten days or so.
So you got that grant?
No, we're waiting to hear.
Waiting to hear on the grant?
Yeah, yeah.
Fingers crossed.
Yep, so, yeah, and we, on our next meeting, will start to build climate, a climate action plan, no matter what. You know, whether we have some unemployee or not. We just need to start working on what's next.
Well, and on that subject, obviously Erin Dent, our Island Institute Fellow, has been working very hard and almost exclusively on the Comprehensive Plan. But her, her time.
She comes to resilience.
Right, her time will be decreasing on Comprehensive Plan. And it, it makes sense to me that her next big project be the Climate Action Plan and other things related to resilience. But probably this group should just weigh in on that since.
But you know, what?
On what Erin, how Erin spends her time. Yeah.
Could definitely use.
Yes.
The, the, the way that was written up to begin with was, she would transition into that.
Right.
I think it's in the plan.
It's in the plan.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page about that because she's kind of a hybrid employee, not, she doesn't work for Brandon specifically, who tells everybody else what they should be doing. So, I think.
She's a great person.
Oh, yeah.
An asset.
She is a great asset. And this past Thursday, she had helped put together this talk on the seaweeds of Maine that was in this room Thursday night. And it was so interesting, of course, this woman from Maine Sea Grant presented. Of course, that's, their funding's just been cut, I think. But, but hopefully gonna still be there. But it was so, and that presentation, also Scott Lord, who's a local sugar kettle farmer, presented. And that presentation will be posted on the website, just like the panel discussion we had in January on the Working Waterfront. That's on the town website. It was recorded and it's available. And I had no idea that Maine had two hundred different species of seaweed. So the things you can learn by coming to town events.
Erin also rescued the, the slideshow upstairs for the Granite Industry Historical Society presentation by Steve Lindsay, which was attended by at least fifty people.
Great, great.
And was that recorded? I'm hoping that was recorded because I couldn't stay.
I don't think they could just.
Think so, but it was, hopefully Steve will do it again sometime.
Did he have slides?
Yes, he does a great presentation.
And people in the, in the audience who had ancestors who've been worked in the quarries got up and spoke about it. So that was.
Fabulous.
It was, this was a booming place.
I know it, and the parking lot was packed.
Talking about growth management.
Yeah, right. So any other items for tonight's agenda? No?
The next meeting's actually at five, right?
So the next meeting is April seventh and at five is the public hearing. And as Tammy pointed out, I had more things I thought we were doing that night than we actually are. We don't need to talk about the, the cemetery thing because that's a town meeting vote. So people will be able to ask questions at the town meeting if they have questions. And we already had the public hearing for the shelfish ordinance and the food sovereignty. So it will mostly be the historical society leases and whether or not people want to vote to accept the donation of the youth and scouting properties. And as soon as that public hearing is done, we'll start the town, the select board meeting. So like if we finished at five forty-five with the public hearing, we just immediately go into this meeting and it'll be upstairs. Right, we don't have to sit here for forty minutes or whatever. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Five. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Susie. Thank you, Susie.
Drive carefully.
Yeah.